Vermillion City Council Meeting Scheduled for Monday, July 21st, 2025, for 6:00 PM. We'll call the order. Katie, will you call? Roll?
Here.
Holland.
Here.
Genoine.
Here.
Helwig, Cheeseman.
Here.
Murrah.
Here.
Mayor Cole.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So everyone had a chance to review the minutes for July 7th, 2025, of the special meeting and July 7th, 2025, regular meeting. If so, are there any changes or is there a motion to adopt the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Counsel Holland, a second by Counsel Price. Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Minutes are approved. Adoption of the agenda. If everyone has a chance to review the agenda, is there any changes or motion to adopt?
Approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve of the agenda by Counsel Price. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Cheeseman. Any discussion on the agenda? Alls in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Agenda's adopted. Visitors to be heard. For persons addressing the council, please come to the podium, speak your name and address for the record. For items not on the agenda, members of the public may speak under visitors to be heard and remarks only to five minutes and no decision will be made at this time. For each agenda item, public testimony will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after the subject has been announced and explained by staff and any citizen who wishes may speak for one time for five minutes. Public testimony will then be closed and the topic will be given to the governing body for action. At that point, council members and staff may only discuss the agenda item unless the council member moves to allow another person to speak and unanimous consent is from the council. Questions, however, may be directed to staff or member of the public through the presiding officer at any time. Are there any visitors to be heard for items not on the agenda today? Seeing none, we do have a couple of public hearings. Our first one is a special permit to exceed permissible noise levels for Ribs, Rods, Rock and Roll event on September 5th and 6th from 5:00 PM to 11:45 PM at the Radigan Plats. Nick?
Yep, Ribs, Rods, Rock and Roll has applied for a special noise permit to exceed the usual noise limits for a street dance on West Main Street between High and Prospect as well as Caterer Market and Austin Streets on Friday, September 5th and Saturday, September 6th from 5:00 to 11:00 PM. The stages will be set up at the Radigan Plats and the map for the area is attached. The council will need to decide whether the location is, the location and timing are suitable, whether the necessary facilities are in place and if the event serves a public benefit. The event organizers have already paid the $25 noise permit fee and city staff recommends approval of the permit.
Thank you, Nick. Is there any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, move to council for discussion. Any discussion by council? Is there motions? Motion by Counsel Murrah, a second by Counsel Leiber. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by saying nay. Motion carries. Next public hearing item is a special daily malt beverage and wine license for Ribs, Rods and Rock and Roll on the same dates. Nick, go ahead.
Yep, Ribs, Rods and Rock and Roll has submitted an application for a special daily malt beverage and wine license for their annual event scheduled September 5th and 6th. The event will take place on Main Street instead of the surrounding streets and public areas, all outlined in the attached materials, including a colored map that is included in the street closure request for this event. Since the event will be held on city properties and streets, the ordinance allows city council to place any reasonable conditions on the licenses consistent with state law. The applicant is requesting permission to sell beer and wine throughout the designated areas. The police department completed a standard background check and found no alcohol-litted violations or felonies for the party involved and all fees have been paid for, the $30 per day fee for the license and $20 advertising fee totaling $80 and city staff recommends approval of the special daily license.
Thank you, Nick. Any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, council for any discussion? Any motions? Motion to approve by Counsel Genoine. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Cheeseman. Any discussion on this? Alls in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Nick. Now, next would be old business. We do have a second reading ordinance, 1536, to amend Title 11 in reference to governing transportation network drivers and companies. Alex?
Thank you. So, the purpose of the changes that were proposed last time was to fix any language and kind of help streamline the ordinance by removing any of the redundant language and provisions that are already covered elsewhere in the code. The proposed amendment eliminated redundancies between taxicabs and TNCs by utilizing the umbrella term vehicle for hire for both. The revisions do not create new regulatory requirements or alter the city's current regulatory intent. Instead, they clarify and simplify the ordinance, making it easier to read, interpret and enforce. But following the discussion of the council meeting on July 16th, staff updated some language in the ordinance and removed some of the original changes in order to be clear with the regulations that are going to be required. Some of these changes are substantive and will require a first reading. We kind of recommend postponing the updated ordinance to the August 4th city council meeting. Additionally, staff did look into other city regulations for TNCs and whether or not the city needs to regulate them, since TNC drivers are regulated by the TNC company. Staff looked at 11 other cities and their regulations and found that six cities regulate TNCs and five do not. Aberdeen, Mitchell, Sioux Falls, Rapid City, Watertown and Yankton do have regulations while Brookings, Huron, Madison, Spearfish and Sturgis do not. Between the cities that do regulate TNCs, Vermillion is on the lighter side of regulations. Again, city council also need to decide if TNC drivers should be regulated. The adoption of the ordinance will only involve publication costs and administration recommends postponing the second reading of ordinance 1536 until the next city council meeting on August 4th. Or I guess first reading.
Thank you, Alex. Is there any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, move to council for any discussion. Discussion by council? Go ahead, Counsel Genoine.
You know, Robert's rules question. Is it a postponement if we are going to have a new reading of the first ordinance or is there a chance that we would be doing a second reading of this one and that's why we're asking for a postponement, just for clarification?
I think that whatever we bring you at the next meeting will have substantive changes to it. So that's why we are recommending postponing it and then we would bring you probably, I envision we're bringing you significant changes for clarifications on that TNC versus vehicle for hire language. We're kind of at a crossroads. There's two ways to go. Kind of what we felt as a staff after reviewing last time is that we needed to maybe better clarify that for the council consideration or is another direction to go to not regulate TNCs at all. And so, that's why we did a little bit more research that way. So the short answer to your question is I anticipate that what we will bring you next time will be substantially different than what you had at your first reading. Why, of this ordinance on July 7th, which is why we'll probably have a first reading again next time. Either way, we go.
So just to clarify, because of those substantial changes, especially since it's a change of an ordinance, we would need to have a first reading because we have to start the process all over again. Is that accurate then, I would assume by?
Right. From a technical standpoint, if you're going to revise this substantively and you want to keep the same proposed ordinance number, since this one's never been taken up, then postponing it makes some sense. Otherwise, you could propose entirely new ordinance with a new ordinance number, take no action on this one. It's sort of 12 to 1, dozen to the other. It's going to accomplish the same goal either way, but if there's no consideration of this version desired, it could either be postponed or just tabled. So if the expectation is it will come back to the next meeting, postponing it gives the public a little more notice that this is going to be a topic of discussion at the next meeting.
But the next meeting would be another first reading.
It would be another first reading. You're postponing the first reading of this ordinance.
But this is the second reading, so that's why I'm confused. Because we advanced the first reading, so this is a second reading, so we would have, would this one then would, I'm a little confused, so wouldn't it? Would this die for fail?
It wouldn't die. It's substantial changes, so it just turns into the first.
It goes back to the first reading?
Yep.
Yeah. That makes more sense to me then. So if this was a second reading and now there's going to be substantive changes, you should bring it back for a new first reading.
Okay.
Frank, if I hadn't been a postponement at all.
Right. Correct. Okay. And then those changes that are going to be done are, do you have any highlights of what those, what we're looking at?
I think that's one of those where we're kind of looking for council direction. If the council direction is not to regulate TNCs, then we would definitely want to go through the existing language we have to strike those references. If it's more towards the line of clearing up the distinction between vehicle for hire, taxicabs and TNCs, then we will still have changes that we feel are significant and the best practice then would be to start that over at the next meeting with the first reading. So if the council has thoughts on that, we'd welcome those.
Would we look at having that discussion at one of our educational meetings, I assume that?
If that was to the wishes of the council, then we probably want to table this indefinitely rather than to a date specific.
Is that accurate in that?
Yeah, I agree. Again, that's the decision of the council. Certainly, a discussion could be had right now if any council members have thoughts on what they want this ordinance to say. But if those discussions want to occur in the future, that could be a possibility as well. It's on the agenda for tonight, so council can talk about it and give any direction the council has. In any case, procedurally, we can make any proposed changes work in the future by bringing it back to council.
Sure. On that note, is there anybody who wants to entertain a discussion, at least so staff know kind of the idea of what we're thinking? Counsel Genoine?
I guess I'd be curious. What, I understand that the TNCs have a lot of their own regulations built in, but what would be the reason that we would consider not regulating TNCs and I don't know if that, that would be the main question that I would want to discuss, whether it's now or in an educational session. I'm curious about that.
Yes, I have a question too.
Your mic, sorry.
I have a question too. You know, we had a thing earlier about the fingerprinting and nationwide database, yet on here, we've got on there, is this going to be stricter than what the TNC themselves is going to require? That we're going to ask them to have a drug and alcohol national, I can't find it now, it's on here somewhere. I know it is.
So part of that is, a lot of the TNCs, they do some of their regulations through the national TNC, be it Uber or Lyft or whatever, you know, other ones might be out there that might be coming along. So they do participate in a more nationwide review, if you will, kind of protecting the brand security of the drivers that bear the names of those companies. So a lot more of theirs has been, while it might be done locally, a fingerprinting or something like that, it's kind of reviewed or managed at a non-local level versus traditionally, the taxicabs was all local. And so that was all managed by us locally in our community or whatever community had these scenarios and how they wanted to do it. And then we kind of morphed in there or added the term vehicle for hire, which covered perhaps not a taxi, but a private ambulance service or something along that line. And so they were kind of this hodgepodge between the two, tended to be more tax-related, but yet sometimes fell under the language of a TNC. So that's part of what we were trying to clarify with those. So that's why in further review this, we feel it's not ready for adoption either way. To Counsel Genoine's question, we, council member asked a question of, why do we regulate TNCs at all? And do other cities regulate TNCs? So that's what led us to begin doing some research on that. I think the question was, well, if they're regulated by the national brand, the national company, do we need to play a role in that locally? So that's kind of, it might be a good discussion for perhaps one of your new meetings where we have a little bit more background available and some slides where we can kind of break down what some of the communities do, unless council members are ready tonight.
I think Counsel Price, I'll let you go real quick first.
I was just going to say, if TNC companies are regulating their drivers, I think it would be fine for our ordinance to say that we don't need to regulate them as long as their company is regulating the certain particular things that we care about, right? As long as they've figured it out, then we could put in the ordinance that it's fine for them to regulate themselves, but we just want to make sure that they are indeed regulating the things that we want them to be.
In response to your statement, Counsel Price, I'll get to you, Counsel Genoine. I do know that both Lyft and Uber regulate driving status insurance. They have to send in those requirements and I believe it's either quarterly or semi-annual. I can't remember exactly, but it's something to that effect. I do know that's, it's more than just a one-time thing, which I do believe is ours, one-time or annual, that we would, the way it's at right now.
For a TNC or for a taxi?
TNC.
TNC. I think that is just a once when they initially get it and then they have a renew. These are based on a calendar year registration, so then when they come back the following calendar year, I think, do you remember, Alex, if they've already had it?
I think there's only one registered for this year.
Yeah. So to that, from a background sense, now granted, this was six or seven years ago. I dabbled into that and tried doing it. It was about six months to every quarter that they did do that, so I do know that. But again, that was also six or seven years ago, so. Counsel Genoine?
Yeah, sorry. Two things have just been said that make me nervous and that is the, you know, we have Uber and Lyft and whatever else might be coming and it's that unknown. And if we have this here now, then we know what we're covering and if we take this away and then something else comes along that's not restrictive and, or not as restrictive as maybe would like, then we're back here again. But then the other comment was, and I understand that it currently discover, or it covers wheelchair transport, but you said ambulance for hire and that just made me panic a little bit. So can we please, I would actually move that we postpone this indefinitely so we can have that further conversation later.
Okay. So real quick, we've got a motion to postpone indefinitely. Is there a second on that? Second by Counsel Toller. So any other discussion on this?
I just have a Robert's rule. Would it be postponing or would it be tabling?
So postpone indefinitely would be an appropriate motion in this instance and then if a future iteration of this ordinance wants to come back to the council with revisions, that would be appropriate?
And that would come back obviously as a first reading because of the changes. And that would come back as a first reading because of the changes.
Correct. That would come back as a first reading.
Thank you. Motion on the table, any other discussion? Alls in favor to postpone indefinitely, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. New business, we have a Mid-American Energy Annual Report. Please step forward if you just want to give your name and who you represent before you start.
Yeah. Thank you. Sam Wagner, Business and Community Development Manager with Mid-American Energy and based out of Sioux City. And before I start my remarks, I just want to take this opportunity to compliment Jose on his choice of shirts today. So I got the memo.
Are you, hold on, hold on. Are you a jackrabbit too?
No.
Okay. All right, you can proceed.
No, no. My daughter is going to University of Iowa, so.
Okay.
Come on, rock guy. I find, after 16 years of living in Iowa, I finally have a dog in this hunt.
All right, all right. You can proceed. Sorry.
All right. So it is my distinct pleasure to be here today and thank you, John, for allowing me to reschedule this like three times. So it is very good to be with you here today. And as part of our franchise agreement with the city of Vermillion, we give an annual report, letting the council understand what we're doing, what kind of staff that we have looking over Vermillion, some of the projects that we've done and maybe some things that we're looking ahead to. So in terms of staffing for Vermillion, primarily Vermillion is handled out of our management of Vermillion, operations and engineering is handled out of our Sioux Falls office. So we have an operations supervisor. We have four construction crew members, four service personnel that cover Vermillion and the surrounding areas, and then also three engineering employees, again, primarily out of the Sioux Falls office, but supported out of Sioux City as well. And so for, I guess to date 2025, we've put in approximately 24 new residential services and then another seven new commercial services installed here in 2025. So some of those include the Cherry Street Mall addition, there's a proposed condo on two to three buildings on East Duke Street, Coyote Rentals, there's the Clay County Union Electric Building remodel that we're doing, the USD Wellness Center that we extended gas to, and there's a couple of others, including the Clay County facility, which I understand is going, we're doing the inspections next week. So things moving along there. And, you know, kind of looking ahead for the next couple of years, we're working with Northern Natural Gas. They have their town border station over there by Masava, really, and we're going to need to put some new main in the ground to connect to a future new substation that Northern is working on. So we expect that within the next year or two. Northern's been doing similar projects in other parts of our service territory. So it's kind of well-covered ground for us. And then basically some problems. So we have a, I love this, we have DEMP projects, Distribution Integrity Management Plan. So basically, these are projects that as they become available, whether we're doing commercial or residential installations or, you know, projects like the Northern TBS, as those projects become available for us to improve our system integrity, if we got the ground open, we're going to do those projects. And so, you know, our goal has been to support the growth here in Vermillion, residential, commercial, even, you know, even the industrial projects. And so we've been working with John and his staff and to make sure that we're delivering on those projects and this growth here in Vermillion. So with that, thank you and I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you, Sam. Any visitors on this? Counsel, is there any questions for Sam? Seeing none, I believe we got a motion to accept the report. Is that, do we need that or no? Nope, nothing on that? Okay. Well, thank you, Sam, so much. We appreciate everything that you and Mid-American Energy does for our community.
Great. Outstanding. And we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Next item we have is requested temporarily remove parking on the east and west side of North Dakota Street in front of the SCSC for, it looks like a bunch of home football games. Alex?
Yep. So U S D has submitted that street closure request. It's on that North Dakota street from SCSC loading dock to South Dakota Highway 50 and to close Rose Street from the front edge of the parking lot, South to Coyote Village, north to SCSC for six fall 2025 USD home football games and for four fall 2025 playoff games. The request of closures will be from 2:00 AM until 7:00 PM for those 10 football games. USD also included Taylor Drive in part of the street closure request, but that's not a city street, so that's not going to be included. So the street request is to provide pedestrian safe accessibility to and from the games in the Dakota Dome. The application and the diagram are attached. So the dates for these games are September 13th, September 20th, October 4th, October 25th, November 1st, November 8th, 2025 for the home football games. And then for the playoff games, it will be November 29th, December 6th, December 13th and December 20th. USD has requested the same request as last year, but the only differences are going to be the times. Previously, it was 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM, but with this new request, it is 2:00 AM to 7:00 PM. We discussed with the applicant to kind of figure out why that request is different and it's more reflective of what happens operationally with UPD. Typically, it's an overnight assignment to put barricades up and the previous 6:00 AM time did not properly reflect the work being done. Additionally, the 7:00 PM time did not reflect the work being done, including tearing down the barricades and waiting for these buses to leave after the games. The 7:00 PM time would reflect the needed time for the street closure and the work to be done. Overall, the time adjusted to 2:00 AM to 7:00 PM is more representative of the work being done for these, for the requested street closures. City has not received any complaints or concerns about how this closure has been handled during the past year. UPD will be provided, will provide setup and removal of the barricades towards the end of the games to allow for exit traffic and street parking to resume. Street, Fire, EMS and Police Departments have all been notified of this closure and had no issues with the new time from 2:00 AM to 7:00 PM. There's no financial considerations. So administration recommends that the city council approve the street closure request to remove parking on the east and west side of North Dakota Street from the SCSC loading dock to South Dakota Highway 50 and to close Rose Street from the front edge of the parking lot, South to Coyote Village, north to the SCSC from 2:00 AM to 7:00 PM on the previous stated dates.
Thank you, Alex. Any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, council for discussion? Counsel Leiber?
Yeah, I know I'm going to be a minority on this, but I'm a little concerned about blocking that whole thing off. It just seems like to me, if you look at north of the yellow spot, there's no, shouldn't be any problem with anybody crossing the street and I don't think we've had any accidents there in the past. It just forces more people into the paid parking and I think, I just, I don't know.
You're referring, I'm just, just to clarify, just on the map, and maybe you can put the map on the overhead screen, Dan. It looks like the area, I'm assuming to be in front of pretty much Holiday Inn. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, yes. That, I don't know why we couldn't, that people couldn't park there. It just seems like to me, almost like it's, I know it's going to sound bad, a money grab by the U, that that's an awful lot of people that are going to have to go find a parking place somewhere, which pushes them into the paid parking spot. And if the issue was safety, going north, at least north of the yellow A spot versus $20 spot, if you allowed parking north of that on both sides, you've got plenty of visibility and open space for people crossing, going back over there. So that's just my opinion.
I, I, I know you, Alex, you mentioned that this is the same as last year. Didn't they have parking work Counsel Leiber was talking about last year? I thought they did.
When I looked at the map from last year, this is the same exact one. The only thing they changed were the prices for the lots that you could park in.
So are you referencing yellow A? I apologize for not the color map there, but yellow A, I believe, is the area that the university, it's a tailgating area.
Yeah, that's that grassy lot. So I believe Counsel Leiber is referring to the space north of that. Okay.
And in north of that.
Okay.
I don't know why people couldn't park north of that.
Well, especially considering that's private parking anyway, so the crossing is primarily going to be from that, that yellow A lot.
Right, right. Which should give plenty of visibility if you're worried about accidents, I would think. I'm just looking, if you walk down the sidewalk to cross over there and you stop in the last place, the park is north of that. Just my opinion.
Well, on that, and my question, and I also have two questions, is last year, they did change to a night game and right now, we're looking at 7:00 PM. If they change one of their schedule of the night game because they have a, yeah, for TV and they're doing well, if we do it only till 7:00 and their game starts at 6:00, this is going to prevent them completing that mission that they want at 7:00. And they understand that, I assume?
I can make that known. I guess I didn't know they changed the game last year.
Last year, they changed the game to a night game. And then secondly, we all hope they do make the playoffs, but the chance that they don't make the playoffs, and obviously we still are now saying no, but there's no game, so technically that would not pertain anyways, because we're only specifically saying during games. Is that correct? So that would be no and void basically, since there'd be no games. Okay. I kind of side with Counsel Leiber on this, if, on that issue there, because I know we talked about the same thing. I believe it was maybe two years ago or maybe it was last year, there was discussion on it going further south and that was kind of the same topic as well?
Go ahead.
Didn't we talk about Rose Street too?
Yeah, that was last year.
We did talk about Rose Street, correct.
Because now I see they have them going in and off, in one way and out the other way and one way in and one way out on the yellow lot.
And that was, that was why Rose Street wanted to be closed off was because of, it gave them the ability to control the access to that lot by doing it just from the one access off of Dakota instead of having both Rose and Dakota. If I remember my memory is correct, that's why they did that. Because I agree, that was, that was an issue I brought up last year. Counsel Cheeseman?
So have we had any parking issues? Anybody calling and complaining over the years about all the street parking?
What do you mean? By like too many people on the street or?
Yeah.
I think the very first year that USD asked to remove parking on Dakota I, I think the very first year that USD asked for parking on Dakota Street, there was some concern with the Holiday Inn Express, but I bet this is probably seven, eight years, maybe longer, that they've had that, and that was more so, they were, the Holiday Inn Express, I think, was concerned about access and about losing parking in front of the facility. That's, to my knowledge, the only complaint that, or comment that we've received on it. The Rose Street, we really haven't received much because it's all university housing or parking lots that have that section.
So the Ferrari and Pizza were going to show their issues?
If they do, I don't recall them contacting the city, or that it was part of a City Council discussion.
Counsel, do you have any, yes, I'm sorry?
They're, they're outside, they're not really affected, they're further south.
Further south. Counsel Price?
Reading the memo again, wasn't there something about the wanting to remove parking on that northern part there because of the gray lot and the buses? Wasn't that part of it?
So it, it's historically been, I'll say the entrance is basically between the north entrance to the dome parking lot off of Dakota Street to about the south end of that gray lot. That's where typically the opposing team buses or equipment trucks have historically parked is in that area. So that's what we used to see initially, I think, was just that spot for the team buses, team semis, and then it, it did change over time to be a larger area.
Yeah, I, I know what you're talking about, Counsel Price, the, yeah, it was the buses, and the buses do park roughly all in front of the gray lot, and then you can see the entrance to their, it's not their loading dock, but it's, well, it's the dome's loading dock that goes downhill there. And then, I don't think the buses utilize the west side of the road, but I think they just leave that open for the width to be done. Counsel Murrah?
So I do know, and I agree with Mr. Leiber on all this too. I do know the buses, you're right, the buses always sit just back from the ramp going down into the dome, and nine times out of 10, their equipment truck is on the opposite side of the road.
Okay.
So, because they load in and out right there. So I do know that, but I'm with Mr. Leiber. Anything north of that yellow lot, I think we should exclude that. I don't, they don't need to have it closed all the way to 50, in my opinion.
Counsel Price?
Is the other issue that there's not a sidewalk on the east side of the road there on the northern section, so people walking would be walking in the road from, from their parked cars? Because I do see that being a problem if they're walking in the road.
Like they parked for daycare or something?
Yeah.
Um, I believe there's, yeah, there's not a, not on the east side of the road, there isn't. I believe there is, yes, there is, I'm looking right on.
On the west, on the express.
There is on the west side, there's a sidewalk all the way from the bike path that goes through the ditch area of Highway 50, all the way to that yellow lot is a, is a sidewalk. And then I do believe there is a makeshift crosswalk going from the yellow lot across Dakota that they have in place for the tailgaters going across. It's not a permanent one, but I do believe they have a, signs, I believe, about people crossing.
So the sole purpose is to unload equipment, that's, that's why they have this rule?
Correct, from what I'm reading. Is that correct, Alex?
I would say from, for equipment, and then if anyone's walking over from maybe the hotel or from tailgating, that's what I would assume.
Any other discussion, or is there a motion?
Can we make a motion to exclude the North Dakota?
You certainly can.
I'll make that one.
So there's a. So, so just to clarify your motion, so I have this right? So just to clarify, so I may have this motion corrected, be to grant them the no parking with the exception of the east and west side of Dakota, basically from the Holiday Inn property line north? Is that accurate? So there's a motion for that, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counsel Cheeseman, I think he beat you there. Any other discussion on this? Counsel Price?
Is anybody worried about people parking on the east side of the road and walking in the road because there's no sidewalk? Because I, I could see a lot of people not crossing to the west side to walk on that sidewalk, and instead just walking in the road down to the, to the entrance.
I could see them walking on the rest.
You think they'd do that and not in the road?
There's a pretty significant boulevard, the only time that would be is if we have a lot of snow.
Yeah, or wet or muddy.
The snow would be the issue.
I worry about that with blocking both sides, but just, you, you think so? I, I would worry about that. I wonder if it'd be better, not that I won't vote for it with the amendment, Mike, but I just wonder if it would be better to block parking on the east side, but not the west, so that people who are parking on the street would be more likely to walk on the sidewalk.
I think, just creatures of habit, I think people are gonna cross the street from the west side right away and start walking on the east side no matter what, yeah. And honestly, because if you get, if you look, the parking also doesn't start until past the bike path further south of that, otherwise north of that is no parking, because it's too close to the egress to the highway. So I don't know how many vehicles are gonna be, I mean, basically, you're looking at the front edge of Holiday Inn Express for the most part. Go ahead.
Except on the east side.
No, I'm talking about just for that, because Counsel Murrah's motion is basically here to draw a line straight across from that top part of yellow A spot.
Right.
Everything north of that would be open for parking. And, and basically, the no parking starts right roughly about where the bike path is, and the bike path is just shortly past the, the parking lot for the Holiday Inn Express, because there's no parking after that because of the egress for the highway, because there's a turn lane there and everything else. I think there's a turn lane there.
It, there's not, I mean, at least not on 20, well, I'm looking at the map, 20.
We have a sign lane on Dakota Street, then?
Yep.
I'm guessing that probably 15 to 20 cars could park on the east side, and if, I, I think that Catherine and I agree that the concern is people parking on that side and then walking along to their vehicles, and that being a safety concern.
Sure.
But I also would not vote against this in, like, overall, because I think the rest of it is fine. I just don't know that I agree with changing that part.
Would it be appropriate, John, to just make sure that if it becomes an issue, that maybe that can be addressed later, if, if we do have concerns of safety? Maybe the Police Department can report back if it is an issue? Is that, is that appropriate for the council? Okay. So I have a motion and a second to exclude basically the part north of yellow A lot there. Any other discussion? All who are in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or by saying nay. Motion carries. Next item, is a request for temporary move parking on the east side of the curb north University. This is referenced by the naditorium on University for USD Home Swim meets.
Thank you. USC submitted that street closure request to temporarily remove parking on the east side curb of North University Street as it abuts the naditorium for the 2025-2026 USD Home Swim meets. The dates will be October 3rd, October 24th, October 31st through November 1st. That would two-day meet there, 2025, and January 24th and January 30th through 31th, another two-day meet, 2026, from 2:00 AM to 10:00 PM. The curb closing will allow for the unloading and loading of buses there, and will allow athletes able to enter the facility easily and safely. The application and diagram are attached. UPD will provide setup and removal of the barricades after the meets, and street parking can resume. USC Athletics is also working with the Wellness Center for this event. Street, Fire, EMS, and Police Departments have all been notified and had no issues with the time from 2:00 AM to 10:00 PM. There's no financial consideration. Administration recommends that the City Council approve the street closure request to temporarily remove parking on the east side curb of North University Street as it abuts the naditorium for the 2025-2026 USD Home Swim meets.
Thank you, Alex. Any discussion on this one? Oh, correction, any visitors to be heard? And now any discussion by counsel? Counsel Holland?
It's kind of vague, in, in front of the naditorium, because does that include the Wellness Center or not? And the concern I have is that that, that street is heavily parked by people using the Wellness Center, including me, because quite often I have to walk more than half a block to get to it because it's crowded. So, and that's just north of the naditorium. The question is, what do they, you know, is that a block just in front of the naditorium, or is it the entire strip? And if they're going to do it, I would approve it if they'd open up the parking lot on the north side of the Wellness Center. It's ridiculous that they've got it as a permit, and nobody parks there. It's always empty. So if they're gonna close the street or close one side, then I'd say, fine, open up the parking lot so we can park. Otherwise, it's a long walk. Unless it's just 20 feet in front of the naditorium, then it's no big deal.
In, in reference to Counsel Holland, it looks like here on the map, I see that it's just this red line here, which, the map doesn't show the new naditorium, obviously, but in front of the Wellness Center, it'd still be open for parking. So basically, it looks like it's just in front of the naditorium is what they're.
Drop-off point.
Correct, yep. So like you had stated, it's a roughly a block long, maybe less, just less than that, because all they would be looking at restricting for, for that drop-off.
Yeah, half a block.
Yeah, maybe a half a block.
That being the case, that shouldn't be an issue.
Any other discussion? Are there any motions? Motion approved by Counsel Price, is there a second? Second by Counsel Cheeseman. Any other discussion on this item? All who are in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or by saying nay. One nay. Motion carries. Next item, there is a request to, by Han Development, to reduce building permit fee for tax credit, income qualified townhomes in the Madison Park Edition.
Thank you. The city was contacted in June by the Han Company. They're looking at submitting a tax credit application for a project of, they're saying estimated between 28 and 34 townhouse units. We haven't seen a site plan yet, and they're still developing their plans. They did do two other tax credit townhouse projects here in the community, Madison Park 1 and 2, over there on the east side of North Norbeck Street, just south of Roosevelt Street. So this is for a property they own in the north side of Roosevelt Street, about, I don't know, 600 feet or more east of North Norbeck Street. Nonetheless, back in, we did our housing study in 2022, they referenced the need for, that the community could support about another 40 to 44 tax credit unit projects. The company certainly had a good track record of building and running these projects here in the community. For those who might be watching at home, it's a federal tax credit, so basically, federal tax credits are awarded to each state, and our state, the South Dakota Housing Development Authority, manages and handles those for the state. What they do is they award those tax credits to projects that meet the scoring criteria. Those then are something that they can sell and helps to generate money for these projects to be constructed. It is a very competitive process, and their application awards are based on the points. As part of that process, 20 points can be achieved, and the 2,000 points that are out there, if they can demonstrate local financial support for the project. Typically, when we have, we considered this in 2013, your waiving of 10,000 of building permit fees would help them achieve the maximum of 20 points. In the email that was sent, they're asking for about 10,000, 10,500 be waived to help them earn these points, and again, what's a very competitive process. We did do this back in 2013, when they were looking at their very first tax credit project here in the community, Madison Park 1 Townhomes. I mean, it's a policy decision for you in terms of waiving building permit fees, and kind of what we looked at at that point in time. You did it if it is a tax credit competitive process, that's when you have considered the waiving of building permit fees, just to keep it fair to all builders that might be out there. They do need kind of a timely answer on this, in that these applications are due by the last business day in August of each year, and then the awards are made about mid-December. We did put some stipulations in there that if the council does elect to award this, they would need to pull a building permit by the end of May 2026. That gives them some time to finalize their plans, get the final drawing submitted, and move that forward. So we found them to be a very good company to work with, very responsive, turn in complete plans, but ultimately, it's a policy decision for the council if you want to waive up to $10,000 of building permit fees to help them earn credit in their application for tax credits.
Thank you. Any visitors to be heard? Counsel for discussion? Counsel Holland?
First of all, what is the building permit fee for that?
I think it's based upon the building cost.
Right.
Correct.
Is it, is it over 10,000?
Yes, that was the question. We, without having a building permit plan, or even their exact number, they're, again, they're estimating between about 28 and 34 townhomes, without having that, but we went back to the 2013 drawings, or Alex Goodburn, our building official, did, went back to one of those drawings, and if they built one of those buildings today, and they built 28, 34, it would exceed that number. Alex, I'm gonna ask this, Alex, do you remember was his, do you remember what the other, Alex's total number was? There you go. Okay, thank you.
Send the memo.
Yeah, there it is. I knew it.
Okay, and if we do 10,000, they get their 20 points, but if we do 20,000, they still only get their 20 points, is that correct?
Correct, that, that 20 points is the maximum that they get. That's why they were asking between 10,000 and 10,500. They figured that was kind of that window that would allow them to get their 20 points.
Then you mentioned about returning the fee. Why would we want to do that?
So when we looked at this at one point in time, we had had them pay it, and then we rebated it versus just waiving it upfront. So you could do it either way. That was probably more of an administrative process and how we wanted to handle it, but that's what that reference meant.
So, I'm trying to, the fee wasn't the entire fee, but 10,000?
Correct. Yep.
I, I would agree at 10,000, I think that's fine, but I don't think it would need to be more than that.
I think it's gotta be 10,001, it has to be over 10,001, is why, is why they asked for that specific amount. John, let me ask you, I know we have another tax credit project with senior living housing. How does this affect that if we're to grant that? Does it hinder that one?
I, I had that conversation with the individual, other individual, looking at the other tax credit project that'll also be submitting an application, and with the price that we are selling them the lots at versus the market rate, that was how they were able to demonstrate their local support. So that applicant is very comfortable that what we propose there with a discounted land price will meet this qualification. And they did, with that application, last year received the 20 points.
Well, I guess, I guess my question though is, is, is the two competing against each other gonna hurt us?
They both know of the other. I, so they're both aware of it. They didn't feel that they were competing because the one is working to do senior housing versus, this would be all ages, so it's not restricted to just senior housing. It does seem like it typically takes about two years. You apply one year, and then you apply the second year, and your odds of getting funded seem to go up in the second year compared to the first year. And so for the senior housing project, this would be year two. They feel pretty good about the application. I, I know with Han's first senior tax credit application, it took two years to get through. I think the second one did as well.
Counsel Cheeseman?
Well, I, so we've had a lot of these sorts of issues come across our computers here, and this looks like something that is going to benefit the community by offering low-income people some housing in the area, and I think that's what we've been kind of looking for for a while, so I would definitely be in support of this, even if it does cost us a little bit.
Any other discussion on this? Counsel Murrah?
I'd be, I'm okay with this. Is there any way, from what I've been told, the TIF we just did on Duke Street, no local companies got any work out of that. Is there any way to see how we can put something on there so they go to our local companies to get the supplies before we do this? Not, you can't, I know we can't make them do that, but can we steer them that way?
So with this, respect to this one, this one's a little bit tougher, because it's, it's not a TIF, and you don't have. it's not a TIF and you don't have that same local control, but that is something that I have suggested to one of the other TIF companies. The other, one of the individuals who writes TIF project applications that I basically said, you know, I think that would help our community is basically three things and would help you all in considering these TIFs. One is that they would try to do more to demonstrate whether paying local sales tax, a timeline so that if, once the TIF started, it gets, once that TIF is approved, it gets started and we don't wait six months or a year, we don't lose it because ultimately, until that money's paid back or the 20 years expires, we can't do anything. So we want to make sure that there is some stipulations that move those forward, that doesn't help your part of it. And the third one is that the council has a way out. If we get into this and we don't feel they're holding up their end of the bargain, they're not, they're not getting it started, that there's a way that, that you have clear mission to be able to end that TIF district. So that's a couple of things that I've suggested, one of the things that we need to look at. But the first one is, we would like to see that they are paying sales tax here. Now, whether that's a local company or that it is an out-of-town company, but at least we're getting the sales tax piece off, but trying to drive that to happen.
Any other discussion? Are there any motions?
Second.
Motion approved. Do you have a dollar amount on that, Councilor Jenewine? Sorry.
With the 10,001, I have that they requested.
The 10,001 dollar?
10,001.
The, the, 10, so there's a motion to approve to waive the building permit up to 10,001 dollars?
Yes.
By Councilor Jenewine and a second. I assume that's the same one that you, for Councilor Price? All right. Any other discussion on this? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item, the resolution for approval of the issuance of sale of revenue bond finance to purchase the equipment for Joint Powers landfill.
Thank you. So as we all know, the landfill dozer is at the end of its useful life. This is the final memo that I will be presenting to you guys for this. The city applied for a solid waste management program, grant from, which is also called an SRF, through the Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources. We were awarded a loan up to 409,100 for seven years at 3.25% interest. This resolution allows the state to sell revenue bonds in order to close our bond to let us pay for this piece of equipment. The bond resolution was prepared by Dorsey and Whitney, the Bond Council. Funding for the project is combined with solid waste management grant, SRF loan, and city joint power reserves. Admin recommends approval of the bond resolution as presented.
Thank you, Katie. Counselor Treisman?
I have a, just a silly question, I guess, but it says it's reached.
The end of its useful life. What, what does that mean? Is there some sort of a regulation that has to be pulled?
Well, yes, there is, there's a useful life for a piece of equipment, so, and at the landfill, they use this dozer hard. They are using it every day, pushing garbage and things into the cells. So I can't remember the exact, I think it's 15 years for a dozer. We just, it was 20, we just paid off the, this dozer that we had, so now it's time for our new one to be paid for.
Just paid it off. Thanks, Katie.
Councilor Holland?
I still don't quite understand what a revenue bond is, but apparently that's what the state's giving us, or not giving us money, they're giving us revenue bonds, is that it?
Yep, so anytime we get a loan, doesn't matter if it's a bank or if it's an investor, they have to sell bonds. So they tell these people, okay, I have the city that wants this much money, who would like to give that money to us? And then that's, they, it's investing into us, so that's.
And we pay it back with 3, at 3.25%? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Better than anybody else can get for a loan right now.
Yeah.
Any other questions on this? Any motions? Motion approved by Councilor Tolliver. Is there a second? Second by Councilor Lieber. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. Next item is the final plat for the Munger Track in reference to an area just north of Jack Powell Edition. How about that?
Okay. Thank you. The city has been working with the owners of the property since late 2024 towards annexing the property being platted. We do have, or I do have a map here showing the area that's in consideration, which would be this red hatched square. This dotted red line would be the city limits. This is Highway 50, the bypass, and Highway 19. So it's, as the mayor mentioned, just north of the Jack Powell Edition and the northwest corner of the intersection between Highway 19 and Highway 50. The plat being looked at is in more detail, would be, again, it's pretty bland, it's just a giant rectangle or square for the most part with all the required right-of-way, it's already been dedicated, whether it's Highway 19 or Highway 50. In addition, there's going to be a 40-foot east-to-west easement that would be dedicated for the benefit of this parcel, or to be more exact, this parcel right here, which is owned by the same individual or same family. As I mentioned, the city has been working with the property owner since 2024 to annex this property. The city's goal since the very beginning was to facilitate the annexation of the property, have the land ready for development in the, in the future, or when the owner chooses, definitely, and utilize the land annexed, annexed adjacent properties that would like to be annexed. The annexation will be considered by the council at a future meeting. The owner has been made aware, has acknowledged, and has agreed that the city may elect to serve the annex area with city utilities as allowed by South Dakota state law or any agreements that may be in place with the utility service providers in the area. The plat being considered is a little bit less than 37 acres, and I mentioned the location of it in the northwest corner of Highway 19 and Highway 50. This land will remain farmland or agricultural in nature until the owner decides to develop it. The city's not asking for it to be developed, we would like it to, but we're not pushing for that by any means. The plat was reviewed by the county commission today at their meeting held earlier. The commission recommended approval of the plat to the council. Due to the fact that this property is in the JJZA, the property has to, the plats have to be reviewed by the county's planning and zoning commission, and they make a recommendation to the city council. This is by state law and by city ordinance as well. The proposed plat meets all the requirements that within the zoning ordinance for the JJZA. The $30 platting fee will be paid by the city. Staff and the county's planning and zoning commission recommend the plat of Munger Track 4 be approved as presented.
Thank you, Jose. Any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, council for discussion? Jose, I got one quick question because you mentioned it here, and I know the last time property was annexed in, the question was, arose about notification. Has the rule utilities, specifically the rule electric, I realize no formal notification may have been sent by now because we're still in that process, but are they aware?
Yeah, they're aware of it.
There, so there is, I just want to make sure that's qualified then on the record.
There, I mean, I have not spoken with them, but I know they are aware of it, yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? Motion approved by Councilor Holland. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Price. Is there any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item we have, I believe, is the MOU in reference to Ask Me Local, 1052 for vacation, buyback, and longevity.
Thank you. When we were having our union negotiations last year to establish new agreements, there were a couple of outstanding items that all parties agreed to leave until 2025, and one of those was a vacation buyback program. We had had a pilot program, we experimented with this in 2022. The second item was a longevity pay program, and this was also something that had been discussed a number of times. Those were delayed, negotiations or discussions on those until this year. We met with Ask Me and kind of reviewed different ideas on it. We met with Labor and Finance Committee of the City Council a couple of different times and established some parameters to work out language on this. So both of those are included. There was a report at your July 7th meeting and a recommendation from the Labor and Finance Committee. Before you tonight is an MOU that lays out those two things. Basically, it establishes that there would be a vacation buyback program. It would be limited to one time a year for up to 20 hours a year, and the employee would have to have certain balances left in their bank after the completion of the buyout of any, buyback, excuse me, of any vacation. The longevity pay program would be for somebody who had been at their top pay step that's available per the union agreement for at least three years, and they have to have at least 15 years of employment, consecutive employment with the city. The way that program is set up, there would be an allocation of funding by the city council, and then the city manager and finance officer would work out a proposal that would determine how that money would be awarded, and that would happen in December of any year in which the city council made an allocation of that funding. So these agreements were with Ask Me. This is part of their union discussion, union negotiation discussions with us last year. So we drafted an MOU with them in mind. We've also reached out to FOP, we haven't heard back from them on it, but it was not specifically part of their union agreement. But more times than not, we have treated our employees equally, so the same benefits would likely be presented, they have been presented to FOP to make sure that they're comfortable those as well. I don't know of a reason why they would not be. We'd recommend approval of the FMOU, of the, of the, of the MOU. Get there yet.
Thank you, Johnny. Visitors to be heard on this? Any counts, or council for discussion at all?
I just want to say thank you to the Labor and Finance for this and thank you to the city staff for this. I know back in, in my previous role, working with the labor negotiation, longevity was a very taboo word, so I feel we've come a long way and I'm a little jealous, to be honest. So, any motions?
Motion approved by Councilor Treisman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Price. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. We have no bid opening, so city managers report, John.
Several items, just a couple of meetings or before your next city council meeting, August 4th. The Planning and Zoning Commission will have a meeting the next Monday, July 28th at 5:30 p.m. There are two items on their agenda. One are, is to consider the boundaries for tax increment financing District Number 12. This is a proposed TIF for the 300 block of Cottage Avenue, and it gets recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission to be part of your August 4th agenda. The second item on the agenda is rezoning request of Lot 8A, Block 7, Erickson's Edition. This is 610 Bauer Street, excuse me, 610 Bauer Street, and the request is to rezonate from general business to general industrial. The Business Improvement District Number 1, that's the board who works with the $2 per night per occupied hotel room fee. They are meeting Tuesday, July 29th at 3:00 p.m. in the Powell Conference Room here at City Hall. The Friends of the Library are hosting a lunch and learn. July 31st would be the 100th birthday of Edith Segress, who had, her name is on the library, she did a lot of things to help with education in the community as well as a significant contribution to allow the library to be expanded and renovated as we all enjoy today. So they are doing a program over the noon hour on July 31st to learn a little bit more about her many contributions to our community. Just a reminder, Thursdays and the Platts events, so West Main Street and Market Street as the Abut Radigan Platts are closed and, is closed on Thursday evenings through August 21st from 4:00 to 30:00 p.m. The city's accepting sealed bids for the 13 residential lots on the former Jolly School site. Those sealed bids will be accepted until the bid opening, which is going to be at 2:00 p.m. on Wednesday, July 30th. We anticipate that the city council will award bids based on what's received on August 4th at your meeting. We do have a complete list of all the instructions available on the city's website. We do have one term that's available on our Human Relations Commission. This is due to resignation as a person's relocating. Expression of interest forms for this one-year term that's left will be, the term expires in May of 2026. We'll accept expression of interest forms through this Thursday, July 24th, and then that would also be part of your August 4th city council agenda. And then a raffle notification we just received, the Boys and Girls Club of the Northern Plains, they are selling $50 raffle tickets. That'll be from September 1st to the 26th of this year. The tickets can be purchased online in several local stores. The proceeds from this raffle will be used for the Boys and Girls Club operating expenses. The prize is a gray eight-by-10 shed, it has a roll-up door, and is valued at just under $5,000. That's, those are all the items I have.
Thank you, John. Next up, invoices. Does anyone have a chance to review the bills? If so, are there any questions on any of them or a motion?
I have a correction on one of the bills.
Correction, Katie, yes?
On item 148, that should be a flat 10,000, not the 10,435.
The Vermillion Food Pantry contribution?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Councilor Tolliver?
John, we got a pretty healthy payment going to Mammoth Sports here, and I know there's been some concern on some of the concrete that was poured out there. Is there any further developments on that?
I know, I had given you an email on it, and then, do you know, Jose, when you met with them, was there anything else? I know Connor was going to get us some more information on it. Did you see anything else? I was out of town for last week, so I don't think I saw that. Did you see anything?
I think Mammoth was, Connor with Mammoth was still drafting up the letter as far as the official, what they were going to be doing, but to sum it up, even though it's not official yet, what they're going to be doing is that they're going to be those areas in that quarter, few May, that are rough or low or high or whatever the case may be, they're going to grind those out, probably at the most about an inch. After that, they're going to clean it out, put on epoxy, and then they'll put the coating that they're going to be. So it's, you're not going to notice it once you have the coating, and all of that work is still going to be covered under warranty through Mammoth, and the cost for all of that additional work will be, that's going to be Mammoth, it's not going to be added into the city's cost, so.
Perfect.
Only question I have, I did notice I'm trying to find where it's at here. Oh, 48 was a fence installation. Is that in reference to the pickleball tennis court as well, or is that a different fence that we got?
I believe that's the fence at Barstow Park because they had a bunch of wind damage in May.
Oh, okay. I didn't know. Okay. Any other discussion on the bills? Your motion?
I'm going to pay our bills.
Motion to pay bills by Councilor Price, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Jenewine. Any other discussion?